Welcome to the program break. We have a work session at 10:05 next up. Betty Riley and Ginger Casto. Let's go ahead and up quarterly update. Welcome.
First of all, it's hard to believe it's the first of October already in the quarter. We have almost missed the first quarter. It's been busy, very busy as far as the both the activity from what Ginger's been working on. Pam has been over here working on several programs and projects. We are wrapping up the wood stove program. We have obligated, I think, everything down to maybe one more we might be able to do, but we have to wait until we confirm the final cost on what we already have obligated. So that will put us at right about 115 units changed out here in Lakeview in the same 115 wood stove, uncertified wood stoves that have been changed down. I don't have the final statistics and I will provide that final report through the state board. But that program, the funding is basically gone and the city is getting calls now of more people wanting to participate. And so whether or not we seek more funding is really up to the community itself, but we do not have any more funding in this program. We're thank you to the county for their participation in the CPG, the Head Start Building. We still need to close out that grant, but it is at the point now where we're just down to the paperwork side of things and working on getting that and that is up for business. And so that's been a project that Pam has been a play at a time on. And she was over here last Friday meeting with some folks to talk about another potential community development grant for this community in the city. Personally, I have taught here in Lakeview two smart startup classes and out of that there's actually three new businesses that have started that are doing well. One, the Adele Store is, you know, the young couple that have taken that over and are really making an impact in that community there and worked with the folks out at the golf course for that new business and your tenant at the incubator building, which I feel he is doing well. So I know there's.
Very well.
He's doing very well.
We've also have processed an enterprise zone application and project for the Lake view reclaim lumber, which he was using that to purchase some equipment for his plant that he purchased.
The enterprise zone, is it in the city or in the county?
It is actually in the city. I think it's in the city, but it's the zone actually covers the urban growth, both city and county.
So what play will the commissioners have?
Basically, it's a three-year, it's approximately $50,000 worth of new equipment that you will have three years of tax abatement on. So there's no, it basically is just goes through the assessor's office.
Okay, there's no decisions to be made by.
No. It is, once that enterprise zone is approved, it is a one, you know, by right for the first three years, there's no other agreements that have to go into place. It's already extended, but that's where commissioners come in. But one thing we do have to be aware of is your enterprise zone does expire. And so that I need to sit down with a committee here in this community and look at reifying, which is an application process. It's a 10-year zone and so we need to start working on that sometime.
When does it expire?
The one in Plymouth expires in July of this next year of 18. I think yours is a year behind that, but it's still, we still need to look at making, verifying and start gathering the information.
You went through the process back in over a year or something?
It was over, and it's a 10-year. So I believe that, so I will verify that, but that is something that is a plan, just kind of putting it on the radar screen. I'd like to have Ginger update you on several things she's working on.
Several things, right, right. First of all, I'd like to talk a little bit about the brownfields project that we brought to you several weeks back. The request for proposals from the EPA is out. The group that we're working with, the engineering, environmental engineering group, Cardinal in Atlanta, Carolyn Weaver is the person that is coordinating, the main person coordinating that with us to start the application, writing the application and gathering the information. So I've been working closely with her for the last three weeks. The RFP came out about the middle of September and so I've been in pretty much daily contact with her, getting her information about the three landowners that are willing to be involved with the first phase of information gathering and also starting to look at gathering letters of support. So we'll be coming to you probably next week with a draft of a letter of support from Lake County for the application packet, which is due the end of December. We're way ahead of the curve, but it's never too soon to get started. And we'll be going to the other partners, which would be Town of Lakeview, City of Paisley to, and Scola to get those letters. And right now, just to refresh your memory on the three landowners, it would be Bobby Carlin with the mill site in Paisley, which is actually in the county. It's not in the city. We believe that there is another site there that the City of Paisley is working on with me to identify that was previously, and I don't know exactly where it is yet, but it was previously mechanic shop for heavy equipment. So that might be one that might participate also. So we have, actually have four sites within the county. The other two are in the industrial, the North Industrial Park here in Lakeview and that would be Lakeview Reclaimed Lumber, which was the previous Wood Green facility and properties. And the other is the Darrell Williams property, which was previously the Lakeview Lumber property. His heirs, children are willing to work with us on that.
Ginger, always conscientious about the general public that's watching. Can you give just a quick little synopsis of this brownfield? I mean, we all know what it is.
Sure.
The audience is one of these.
Sure. A brownfield project is taking a look at what might possibly be on the ground or in the ground in the area that could affect the potential environmental quality of that property. And what we're looking at is our North Industrial Park in particular. We're looking in other areas of the county also where there may be conditions that could affect the further development or the repurposing of properties. We have quite a large area in our North Industrial Park that has been sort of lying fallow for better thinking of another word for it. Because of the decline in the timber industry, most of these properties were involved in that industry. And so we know that we're probably not going to see more mills here in our, in our community. So what could possibly happen with those properties? There are two or three of them that are currently for sale, some of them quietly, some of them actively wanting to sell the properties. And there is some, there needs to be some consideration for the condition of the properties and some of the property owners would appreciate some help. This is not a witch hunting adventure with the EPA. This is actually a very helpful process, not only to help the landowners with cleanup, but also the community and planning for what the repurposing of those properties might be. One of the things that got us very interested in participating in this is our concerns and need for better housing and better, not necessarily better, but more housing in our community for our workforce. So we don't know exactly how that might play out or how the community might see repurposing of that property, but that is the impetus for, you know, we, nobody ever wants to see property that could be used for the benefit of the community just sitting there waiting. So that's what we're, this process could take five to 10 years. That's a long time, but I, you know, I think everyone sort of feels if we don't start doing something now, it'll be another five to 10 years after that. So that's, and Scola has been involved in Plymouth County in similar projects. So we've got some experience.
Matter of fact, there is a Plymouth County owned facility over in downtown Plymouth Falls that will be torn down. It's been through the assessment process and they have determined that it is filled with asbestos and other contaminants in Princeton. So they will be removing it under this program at no liability to the county, which will then bring out a space, which is up there at the entrance into their downtown area. So it's really, and it's also a program I, I belong to as our statewide association for economic economists. Almost every one of the economic economists throughout the state are working in this program. We're looking to be a great, great resource for their communities, both on the east side and over in the same area and places too. So I think it will be good and I'm hoping that we are, in the grant writing process, it's always challenging to compete on a national basis.
Sure.
Just a little attitude that Ginger said is not a witch hunt by EPA, that's given a willing landowner, fortunate to assess his own property or rural property on whether it's contaminated or not contaminated and that facilitates future use or sale change.
Right. And I'm still in the process of visiting with landowners about the project, getting to all of them and explaining to them, you know, as we move forward, if we are successful with the grant, what that could mean, you know, for them. So that there isn't any misunderstanding about what the purpose of it is.
And hopefully the landowners find out their property is clean and that would facilitate you, but if it is contaminated, it'd also facilitate them getting a grant to.
Right. You said it's very dependent these days on financing for any, you know, sale or potential development.
Yeah. The banks are very willing to.
Oh, yeah.
To fund anything that has potential contamination.
Go ahead.
Well, I just, you've been working on broadband also and there's, I don't know if there, how deep you want to get into some of that?
Well, yeah, we could probably talk for a long time about it. It is an ever-changing world and, you know, it's, I, there are some broad strokes that I can talk about. I don't want to get too much in the weeds with it because it does really change on a daily basis. But this project that was, has been supported, I mean, I've been working on providing some advocacy about broadband since I took this position almost three years ago. But we were fortunate to secure USDA grant to look at more specifically how we could develop better information to become more competitive in any grants processes that we might be able to bring into the county to extend our, or to improve our broadband situation, most particularly in the Warner Valley and the Surprise Valley. It was a dual county effort, or it is a dual county effort. And the, the grant itself was for a year, but we asked for an extension into March of 2018 and we were granted because we have, we discovered many things as things like this goal or grants that are sort of development or information gathering, resource gathering. You start out thinking you're doing one thing and you end up realizing that there, because you have the opportunity and the time to really delve into it, that there are places where you can really develop some advocacy that can be important. And what, and this is, you know, my perception, but I think it would be sort of supported by others, is that what we ended up being able to do is to bring together the fiber companies. There's three tiers of, of commercial or business development in the broadband area and that would be infrastructure, the actual ISPs that are on the ground that develop, that deliver service like TNET, et cetera, and the other larger companies like Century Tell and Fire Server, whoever. And then the fiber companies who are the ones that were really dependent on to get the service here. Some like Fire Serve use microwave to get here, but you know, we can't go anywhere at this point in time with the way that our technology is without having fiber. And as we all know from our experiences last summer, we are very dependent on fiber for our internet services here in our county. And we do not have what they call redundancy, which is a loop of fiber that would allow us if some place fell down somewhere that we could reroute and use, use the fiber elsewhere. And we were caught two or three times and very recently where it was fairly crippling for a lot of our businesses, for our Lake District Hospital, for our prison, for the county, you know, we've, we've had some troubles. So one of the things that we have been able to do is to bring some of these folks together with other public entities to help the conversations along that could be helpful in the development and continuation of the fiber, the fiber ring, so to speak. What we are hoping is that we can go south and connect in to links that come out of Plymouth Falls and possibly go north through Highway 31 area to link in with Lecon, or actually.
The fiber to the health clinic.
Yeah, the health clinic in, in Christmas Valley. So we've had many conversations about that and, and, you know, it's, it's bumping along through the E-rate system to bring fiber to schools from Lakeview to Paisley. We've got a little more of the, of the link going from there. So one of the things that we were able to do was to go to Surprise Valley Electric and have conversations with their board and their CEO and introduce the concept of having that utility work as many other cooperative utilities, electric co-ops, work and develop broadband systems for their customers. And while Surprise Valley Electric really doesn't feel they're in a place right now to actually develop a system that they would sponsor or provide to their customers, they were willing to work with Hunter Communications to hang fiber from Lakeview to Paisley, which really significantly reduces the cost of getting fiber from one place to another. And it does open up for our rural communities, the possibility as, as fiber companies and ISPs, et cetera, come together to flush out our system, it really opens up great possibilities here in Lake County for Warner Valley or for almost every rural area that's served by Surprise Valley Electric. Now, this kind of a system would take a long, long time to develop and there are no places anywhere for this, but it is really kind of an interesting leading edge that our county is gonna hopefully enjoy. At least right now, we're enjoying getting it from Lakeview to Paisley. So the other thing that we've, that we've been able to do is not only with the advocacy between those, those companies, et cetera, is to gather information in the field from the users of the service or the people who really want to have better service. The amount, the number and the variety, which I still haven't completely got a handle on, of home-based businesses in our rural areas above and beyond agriculture and livestock, ranchers and farmers is really staggering. We have a lot of people who are professionals in their field, such as attorneys, designers, IT kinds of things. Yeah, book writers, internet sales, all sorts of things that really depend on the internet and need better access or more bandwidth to improve their business and even keep their business. This last outage has really raised havoc with the Warner Valley and some of the folks that have businesses out there, bed and breakfast, and just the, the folks that are ranching and farming out there now able, they've had a really hard time in the last couple of weeks. So trying to improve that service is really important and Commissioner Shown has been really good in helping make some connections with legislative staff so that we can provide the information that they're needing for, you know, for all of that. And so we, it's, like I said, it's an ever-changing landscape. These, it's interesting because the companies, while they're competitive with each other, they also cooperate in very interesting ways and we've been able, I think, to play a role in that. And so that's.
Ginger, maybe before you go on, just a quick comment.
Sure.
Really appreciate all the work you're doing on this. When you talk about the outage of most recent, it is that, because I, my phone has been ringing, it's definitely affected the Paisley area.
Yes.
The El Kiona at Summer Lake Store and the businesses up there, called it last night again, they're still out this morning.
Even here in Lakeview, they're still having trouble. It's a Century Tell issue.
Well, and we talked briefly with Josh and it sounds like it's even more than Century Tell, although there's service providers that do have service and have throughout. But to your point, and I appreciate your comment, you know, Representative Reskey, I think what we're finding now, be careful what you ask him to do because he's gonna bite onto it and not let go. And as you know, I've been sharing emails with you. He was meeting with Trey Hendricks, the Director of Government Affairs and Senior Counsel for Century Link yesterday, Century Tell in Portland. I haven't heard how that went, as well as Sarah Ritter-Bush, she's the State and Local Affairs Director for working in Southwest Michigan. So we do have an advocate that will definitely help us in any way we can. I think the challenge is gonna be, as I shared with Ginger, you know, I'm late to the party and I made it very clear to Representative Reskey, I haven't been working on this and I explained to him who had. And I said, we don't want to work across purposes here and take all your energy. So he understands that, I believe, but that will be the challenge going forward is to marry these efforts kind of together and not.
Right.
Not over each other.
Right. And Commissioner Kessler and I, you know, like I said, since I started here almost three years ago, we've been working on this and it is just, you know, the last year, it's with the help of the USDA grant and everything, it's really ramped up to a whole different level than I think we even imagined that we were gonna be able to accomplish. And while it seems slow in some ways, we've actually made a lot of progress. The Oregon telecommunications conferences in, in two weeks and we're really looking forward to being there because that really, really pushed us forward last year to be involved in that. And I don't know, you might have some things to add.
I do know that the half million dollars that was allocated to the legislature for broadband is being looked at throughout the state and so, you know, I don't think that will have a lot of impact on what the need is out there. I'm not sure what we have learned from Oregon Business Development Department. I was on a conference call with Chris Cummings, who is the, works within this, the Oregon Business Development Department. The rules are being written at the staff level right now, but probably won't be out until November sometime to understand how those ones might be used.
Well, we talked about the broadband conference and I know you attended that, Ginger, and it's coming up again, but, and I don't know if I said it already, but Trey and Sarah, they want to come down here and actually meet face to face and Representative Reskey, bring him, you know, have him come over. So there'll be an opportunity, I think, in the near future to talk to them about, at least on the Century Link side of things, what they can do to help us out, so.
So, yeah, I don't know, time-wise, I think we need to kind of move on, but there, you had a couple more, just.
Well, just briefly to say that I have also been really busy working with some local businesses to, mostly in the area of retention, but also some in the area of expansion, which is always nice. And when I say expansion, we, you know, some of it is planning for, not here yet, but we're looking at, you know, increasing, you know, jobs by two to three people maybe in a business, some maybe five to six. Not a lot of growth, but some, and trying to help some stay steady and, you know, stay in business. So, you know, if that's all, that is like almost on a daily basis, I get something from someone who has an inquiry and has a need and that has taken time to develop. It wasn't that way when I first began this position, but over time, you know, it's, you know, people, I think, have understood that that's another thing, you know, another service that we have. With most, the greatest support, I would say, in the last quarter or so, has been to Lakeview Reclaimed Lumber and helped them with their enterprise zone agreement and also just providing, you know, some on-the-ground information about the area and about how to access information here locally and resources. And then GK Sound Booth, which is in the South Industrial Park, which has really, it is under new ownership and the new owners really want to expand the facility, not only physically, but also with personnel and they're very solid couple who, owners who I think have a great deal to offer a community. So I'm excited about that. And then there's, you know, there's things that are happening here in Lakeview downtown, working on the Algeird Theater, which is coming along very well. And also just beginning conversations with the community and John Kogar about the Hereford Building and what, and working with Restore Oregon about what, repurposing that building and seeing what can happen because it is a real cornerstone of our downtown and we need to see what we might be able to do to keep that.
So two quick things. I want to go back for a minute to the two or three or four or five jobs or those types of discussions.
Yes.
But what you're talking about there, I found it interesting about three years ago, a young couple in Buns, some of their downtown buildings are similar to our downtown buildings. And I don't know, I don't know who they are and I don't know what the opportunity might be to reach out to them, but it sounded like they did some extensive repurposing, remodeling and so forth. I haven't seen the findings since they've done it, but that, that's, you know, that's one of those, we don't need to reinvent the wheel, there may be some people out there wanting to.
Oh, no, wait, yeah.
But I wanted more specifically to talk about the jobs and Ginger, I don't think you could overstate the importance of those jobs.
Right.
As few as they may sound like.
Right.
And for two reasons that I wanted to share with everyone. I don't know what the all-time high population in Lake County is, but what I do know is that it's at an all-time high relative to the last several decades. We're over 8,000 people.
That's a lot.
But that's, it hasn't been there. And most people think because of the industries that have left, our population's way down. Well, our population's actually up and hand in love with that is our unemployment. Because we, you talk to, we talk to businesses, our unemployment is at decades, multiple decades, all-time below.
Right.
So I think, I think we're better off than we realize, but we're not where we want to be. We want to see these downtown buildings filled in with businesses, but we also know, and that's the challenge, I think, in all of our communities, not just in Lake County, but across the nation, is the habits of people have changed. And so the old structure of having old downtowns that are remodeled and full of businesses may be in some respects a thing of the past, unless we come up with new creative things to put in there that people don't know internet shopping on.
Right.
Because I, the fellow that runs the UPS program, Greg Davis for Plymouth and Lake County, known him for a number of years now, and I was visiting with him the other day and he said their business is booming with UPS. I mean, the, the amount of shopping that's done online as opposed to regular retail is incredible. So just wanted to throw that out there.
Well, and one of the reasons, I think, one of the things that we can attribute some of the increase in population is that people are moving out of the cities and into areas like Lake County because they want to be where they want to be. They want to be there. And many of them have livelihoods or businesses that can be, they can telecommunicate, they can have their business. they can have their business on the internet and, and do very well and provide a good income. We don't see them necessarily in our employment statistics, but we do see them at our doorstep when we do not have adequate broadband access to internet. So that's why I think that, I mean, obvious, it's obvious why the internet is important, but I think it's also very important to us in terms of job growth and, and these folks wanting to, you know, a lot of our young people want to come back. And there is a movement among some of them to do just that. So.
And that's been my goal, where it's been on, is getting the broadband up so that people can work at home and bring people home.
Yeah. Just really quick, there's a couple of opportunities that we're looking forward to.
I just wanted to make a comment, as I said, you're listening, and it's all very positive, but it comes back to the workforce and people that are hired or people that will pass the background check and drug check. As we promote, and we do have one or two or three jobs, that's how important the workforce side of it is, is to get people further trained and ready to go as we try to go and as we are going to. And so just, means we just had a workforce discussion that all plays in together. And that's so important for our community, countywide, all the way across the county, is the training, get that workforce there ready to go, so people have some better time.
One of the things that was encouraging to me is talking to GK Soundbooth. They've actually been able to work with the high school. And Fred Smith, who's running his program, has been able to place directly high school students into their, into their manufacturing facility. So, and that ties into the opportunity that Jim Walls and Fred and myself will be having lunch discussion on about doing some demonstration project related, and it's putting on the nonprofit hat that I wear as the, the Clamath Lake Regional Housing Authority has a 501(c)(3). We're going to look at a partnership between LCRI and, and our nonprofit, and also working with Fred on some demonstration affordable housing projects. And so looking at, working on something that is unique. Jim's found some products that I think I hadn't been aware of, and so I think we'll have some opportunity there. Also, we also have worked, met with, are meeting with the owner of the Mary's Building on energy efficiency and trying to upgrade that building so that it is more conducive to running out empty. And they are looking at using our loan program, Energy Efficiency Loan Program to help do upgrades to that building. So I think that's, may, should be happening over the next six months or so. I'm still got loan money sitting in the bank, trying to figure out. After spending all that time foreclosing on one loan, I get a little nervous, but I still need to get my loan money out. And so we're always looking for, you know, good projects to make sure people know about that program. So any assistance you can have of directing them to, to us. And any, there is a grant out through DLCD. I don't know if Darwin has any specific projects or anything, but economic development is a priority this year for that grant program, but it's due October 13th. So any thoughts or anyone you need to talk to, I'm more than willing to partner on, on that. And I'm also been working with Ann on your tiger grant.
Yeah. And that's one of the long, really nicely things. Thank you both, all those that...
Well, it was just, it was more of, I'm going, well, I know this information's here and this information's here. She's been doing a lot of the, the day-to-day stuff.
You know, not, not to reinvent the wheel type thing, you know, going back to what we did before, but you're exactly right. Different ones have been involved in that. Dave's been involved, I've spent time on it. We've got some really good support letters coming, but she's got some really good outreach with folks who are back there in DC through some of the companies. And we're, we're, we're going to have a nice chance.
Yeah, it's just, it's a lot of details that have to go into that application, and so it's...
Yeah. Well, the beauty of the rural side, the 500 million, just since we're talking about it really briefly, the tiger grant, and ours is for the rail line improvements, there's 100 million set aside for rural areas. And each state can receive up to 50 million. Well, you know, that doesn't work with 50 states and territories. But because of the nature of what we're doing and our requests and what we're showing for, not match so much, but other support and the benefits, I, I think we're, I think we're going to have a shot. I think we're going to have a shot at it.
Well, I also met with the Seattle Regional Director of EDA, and they would be interested in the project. I put that on hold while we were looking at the tiger. But the Seattle, you know, the Lynn Smith, who's been the director there for 25 years, said, you know, I talked to him personally, he said to, gave me C staff to work with. So the issue there, though, it would be a grant, but only for 50%. And so the tiger really is your best bet to be done.
Oh, it is. Because the rural side of it, and that, that needs to be stated for the record, the rural side does not require any match. We know that, you know, when you, when they look at applications, if you have the opportunity to show that you've got some money that's being invested from other entities that they're more likely to fund you, and that's not required to have a match, so.
And so I, you know, I'll continue to work with Ann on that. And any other questions or priorities that you want to toss our way, let me, you know, make sure that we're aware of it. You know, we're, I do communicate with the net, you know, trying not to duplicate what Regional Solutions is doing. And I'm hoping that we have our new business breaking ground. I don't know where we're at on that for sure, but...
It's getting close.
Getting close.
Yeah. Well, great update.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
We do have Jim in the audience. I don't know if Jim's here today to talk about security cameras, or if he has, if he wants to talk about his hunting, or is there anything, Jim, in particular?
I can briefly just expound on what Betty said. There is a new product out called Mass Panel, Mass Plywood Panel, and a mill being built in Lyons, Oregon. And they're interested in doing a demonstration home here. And we're working with the Tallwood Institute at OSU and the University of Oregon on design and stuff. My goal, and it's only a goal, for workforce housing and affordable housing, would be able to put up a 1,200 square foot home for under $80 per foot. And if we can accomplish that, and that's a goal, I want to state that, my goals could get lofty. So that may be lofty. But I think with this panel, it's a two-foot wide panel of plywood that competes with the cross-laminated timber mill being built in Riddle. But those aren't economical for single housing units. They're multi-story. Economics is great. So this plywood panel that will be a competitor is good for single-story homes. And if we can start putting up homes for workforce and stuff, because that's a nationwide problem. Workforce housing is just not Lake County. It's all over. Same with affordable low income. If we can deal with those, I think we've got a good chance. I'll just leave it there. We've got a team starting together by email to, like I said, involves the University of Oregon, Oregon City.
Well, thank you, Jim. And thanks for sending me that link, the question. And I, I never seen it in the link, of we're talking workforce housing and everything. Will these panels pass for commercial buildings, single-story?
I don't know. That I don't know. This is, by the way, we're responding to a governor's request for inquiries for workforce housing. And I thought this was an excellent opportunity. And we can show by the, the work that Dr. Richard Gardner did, economic work for Ford Family on the 22 homes that he studied at LCR Equipment Renewables, we're saving those 22 businesses, ranches and homes, about $5,000 a year in heating and electrical costs and the work we do. So we can show those types of savings right now. We're confident in that. And if we can show building a home plus those savings, that all of a sudden becomes a, yeah, could be produced here. Who knows? That all depends on Red Rock coming and a whole bunch of how the market grows nationwide for this product. If it's that good of a product, that I think it is, could be some growth there. So just to let you know, that's a pilot we're working on and should be beneficial to the whole county. So I appreciate it.
Thanks, ma'am.
Thank you, Jim.
So our next item and our last item, except for any department updates or liaison updates, is the discussion of the county's security camera policy update graph that we have. I don't know if people want to take a quick break. I know Mr. Bailey's going to join us before we start. I don't want everybody to be uncomfortable with it.
I, I could take a break.
Okay. We'll take a very short break. We'll get, we'll get Mr. Bailey on the phone. We'll break here at quarter to 11:00. Try and come back by 10:00.